All right. Going to call to order the meeting of the Johnson County Planning Commission for Tuesday, March 22, 2022. And let us start with a roll call, if we could.
All right. Michael Levin.
Here.
Mark Huggins. Randy Hutchins.
Here.
George Lund.
Here.
Jim Neese.
Present.
Chris Iliff.
Here.
Dave Johns.
Here.
Kelly Rast.
Here.
Roger Mason. Lindsey Grissay.
Here.
Randall Downing.
Here.
That completes the roll.
Okay. Everybody's here. All right. That's great. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Are there any objections or corrections or additions that need to be made to the agenda? Hearing none, the agenda will be approved as printed. We have two sets of minutes here to consider for approval. The first of those is for the February 22, 2022, meeting. That was, we were meeting on 2/22, weren't we? Yeah. And I would ask if there are any objections or additions or deletions that ought to be made from those minutes? Mr. Leipzig, your concern is with the December?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out the page number where that change is in the December 14th meeting minutes.
Okay, we're just going to take the February ones just right now and then I'll call on you, if you would. Okay.
That's what I thought.
Any, if, hearing no recommendations for changes, is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the February 22, 2022, meeting?
Randy Hutchins, Mr. Chairman, so approved.
All right. Is there a second?
George Lund, second.
It's been moved and seconded that the meeting minutes for February 22, 2022, be approved. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. With regard to the December 14, 2021, meeting minutes, Mr. Leipzig, you have a comment?
Mr. Chair, thank you, Jay Leipzig, Planning Director. Just wanted to point out, on the top of page 13, there's a correction on these meeting minutes that if you look at the highlighted portion that says motion by Commissioner Downing and restated by Chairman Neese, that is the new, or the revised, meeting minutes. So I just wanted to point that out.
All right. And with that correction, in your opinion, are the meeting minutes otherwise accurate?
Yes, they're accurate.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Jim Neese, I make a motion that those minutes be approved as amended or as corrected.
All right. Is there a second?
Mike Levin, I'll second.
Okay, we've got two seconds. Mr. Levin, I'll recognize your second. So they've been moved and seconded for the approval of the meeting minutes for the December 14, 2021, meeting. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, if we ask the other members to respond on their comments, are we doing a round?
All right. Just, yeah, make sure the little green light on your microphone is on.
It's on.
Yeah, and then lean into it a little bit. Yeah. And I would remind all of us, including myself, to make sure that we state our names before we make remarks so that the record can be as accurate as possible. We now come to the topic of public comments. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on any item which does not appear on the agenda. Are there any members of the public who are here that would like to address the Planning Seeing no one, we will move past the public comments and go to our continued discussion of proposed bylaws of the Planning Commission. And I would recognize the Chief Legal Counsel for Johnson County, Peg Trent.
Well, good evening. Thank you, and I'm glad to be back here, a second time, to go over the bylaws. I did receive, since our last meeting, some comments from a few of you, and I hate to say this, but I've been away on vacation last week, and so I didn't have a chance by the time they came in to get it to you in advance, so I apologize. But what I'm going to do is walk through some of those revisions, and it still is going to require, by some of the questions that were raised, that we have some discussion about what you would like to see, and if you had any additional questions as a result of those questions that were posed to me last week. So, if I may, I'm going to go through, kind of looking at, some of this was housekeeping, meaning punctuation. And the first one in Article 2, Purpose and Mission, and I've tried to highlight, if you can see this, and is it appearing on your screens in front of you as well, so you can see it? I just deleted that. So then we get down to the next revision, and just so you're aware, there were three individuals that did make comments. One was from the public, from Joyce Whittier. The second one was from Randy Hutchins and Lindsey Grissay. And they had actually come up with some great thoughts that we need to discuss tonight to get your input. So on 2.02, there was a question, and I apologize if I misstate it, but there was a question as to wording and to who, how are you to bring this forward, this comprehensive plan? Meaning, the way it's currently written, it just basically says you are to review. But in theory, and in reality, since you're doing that right now, and you've gone through it with the solar, as you recall, that's with the assistance of planning staff and outside professionals. So I appreciate that. Lindsey called that out to make sure that it's clear that you would review this with the assistance of those individuals. And I think that's more clear of the intent. In addition, it was brought to my attention in 2.02 that when you review those amendments, you are not presenting them to the board for final adoption, you're making a recommendation. Again, that's in line with the current law and what you're doing, and words mean everything. And so this was from wording. And I will submit to you that I borrowed a lot of this language from your existing resolutions of where the genesis of some of this language came from and state statutes. So these are good points that were brought to my attention. The next one, 2.03, 03, it was a typographical, it should be insure, not ensure. As we went down to 2.04, 03, and 2.404, and I want to take a moment to have some conversation about this clause, because there were a few questions that were raised about this clause. The resolution, and it was from 1984, that was the actual genesis, or the reformation, if you will, and I explained that to you the last time I was here, of the Planning Commission. And at that time, I looked in, I looked into the resolution, what were you directed to do as a Planning Commission once you were reconfigured? Because the state statute also came into being at that time. I also looked to prior resolution to give more direction to you when you're reviewing, because you're reviewing, but what standards or policies are you supposed to be utilizing? And actually, prior to 1984, the resolution actually laid out pretty well what you were to look towards. And so those are going to be some of our conversations right now, because I did speak with planning staff. There actually were more in the resolutions that we reviewed that put this together, but after talking with planning staff and with your counsel for the Planning Commission, Rick Lynn, it was consolidated into these four points, kind of giving you guidelines. And I'm not going to read to you, but I am, just to give you context here, the JC or the Planning Commission shall consider the following policy matters when you're adopting matters adopted by the board in this resolution, in the revisions of the comprehensive plan and the zoning. And this gives you direction as to standard you're looking at. So you're going to look at when you're looking at zoning regulations, or you're looking at a comprehensive plan. The Commission had previously outlined what they wanted you to look to, towards as policymakers. And they wanted you to look towards the provisions for an orderly growth, which makes sense. We don't want, you know, the way you grow into the unincorporated area and what happens, we want to make sure that that, or that growth is orderly. So they're recommending development, you consider developmental policies concerning appropriate density, plating, land use patterns, the need for transition between undeveloped, partially developed, and full urban development. That actually provides you guidance as you are coming through, looking at these regulations and when you review it in its entirety. The Commissioners also had put in there a mechanism to reduce the county subsidies, recommend development standards and cost sharing, which is a very big priority of the Board, as you may know right now, of cost-sharing procedures to support capital projects. So when you are, and collector roads is an integral part of the development process. So when you are considering the regulations or the comprehensive plan, it is the direction of the Commission from this previous resolution that you look at, how can we do cost-sharing procedures, that being with the cities and with the communities as you develop into the unincorporated area? But the two areas where I had a lot of questions from, and I shouldn't say a lot, but from some of you, was 2.4, 03, and 2.404. Again, I did not draft this, I did not pull this out of the air from staff, this actually came from this resolution which created you. And so that gives you the direction. The actual context in which that was put forward was you were developing a new comprehensive plan. So that would also apply, in my legal opinion, to when you're reviewing your comprehensive plan and deciding when to revise it and your regulations. So one of the items was coordination with cities, and this was taken from, it was a combination from that resolution, but it just left with recommend the means by which the rural comprehensive plan and subsequent regulations can appropriately reflect the plans for growth and development of the respective cities in the county. So I guess I pause there, what does that mean? And I think there was some question about the effect of that. Are we asking you to adopt the city's plans? Are we asking you to coordinate it? Or what are we saying here? And I guess I would pause and say, what do you think at this point? Do you feel there's confusion the way that this is written? And does it need clarity? With you being the experts in the unincorporated area, what you would like to see in that coordination with cities?
Randy Hutchins. From my perspective, we've always tried to reach out to many groups and organizations to get their feedback, but again, that feedback was information that we could use to help develop the comprehensive plan. So in my mind, this reads that we shall adopt or support the growth plans developed by the city. And so I just want to make it clear that absolutely we want to hear from the cities, but at the same time, it's this Commission that's developing the comprehensive plan.
Okay. So if I was to amend this to clarify that you are to review the revisions and recommend the means by which the comprehensive plan can appropriately reflect the plans for growth and development, you would, how about consider?
I was just, Commissioner Grissay here, I was just about to say, with due consideration of the growth plans, you know, appropriate consideration, you know, because certainly, like with the solar, it was very helpful to hear from Gardner and other cities on what their growth plans were, and it was informative but not directive. It was not the end-all, be-all.
Jim Neese. From a zoning board perspective, I think we would, we'd take directive from this, and in the past, we always asked the cities to give their opinions of what, you know, give an idea of what they think of any kind of application. So this really wouldn't, and that wouldn't change anything. I think historically, that's what we've really, we've done on a zoning board level, and...
But to make this clear, would that be more appropriate to say, recommend the means by which the rural comprehensive and regulations can appropriately, I wouldn't say appropriately, regulations, I would just say, consider? Jay, do you have any suggestions?
Yes. Counsel, I think, I think recommend or consider, I guess you could, maybe put that word in also, rather than can, you could, you could use the word may, appropriately reflect the plans for growth and development. That gives it a little more, it's more open, I think. I don't know if you all agree with that or not, but...
How's, how's the way I've worded it there? Does that sound better? We did recommend because we wanted to keep with, including, but I recommend, what you're doing is recommend, oh, so that wouldn't be right, sorry.
Commissioner Grissay, I think if you delete the word may.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Then I think it might read a little better, but I like, I like what's your suggestion? Or like, consider at the beginning and then...
Well, we're trying to keep with...
Oh, sure, sure, sure.
Yeah, I know. Recommend the means by which the rural, I guess we're going to see how sausage is made tonight on television. Recommend the means by which the rural comprehensive plan and subsequent may appropriately reflect. But you're not, we're not telling you to do it, you want to consider it.
Correct.
Consider the plans. Okay, recommend the means by which.
I think it is important that we take into account any plans the city have for the areas where we're approving zoning or development. It doesn't mean they have plans.
Right.
But if they do, the progress of this county is that the cities are going to keep growing and precincts in the county, there's not going to be any incorporated county.
Right.
But we need to take, I think it's important that this wording reflect that we will take their plans into account. It doesn't mean we have to.
Okay.
All of them, but it does have to have...
Randy Hutchins.
...firm, some firm, a firm statement about considering those plans and utilizing them.
And this is Karen Miller with the planning department, and, and this is just a thought in the, in our comprehensive plan, our land use plan sets out kind of some guiding principles, and one of them is coordination with the cities. So, and I, and I think it's really clear in the comp plan that, no, we're not wanting to adopt the city's plans, but we're wanting to coordinate with the eye of, of helping ensure their, their proper growth.
Jim Neese, right now, don't we, if we have something, for example, on the zoning board, aren't we pretty much required to notify the cities of the effects? I mean, aren't we, that's...
Karen Miller, we, yes, we do, we do notify them within a certain area, the fringe area, and they provide comments, and, and we, we consider the comments, but we aren't required to adopt the comments. So would this be appropriately worded, then, to say, coordinate with the plans and growth and development of respective cities in the county? Would that be sufficient, Randy? Does that sound better, or not?
Randy Hutchins, no, consider is the more appropriate word. Coordinate suggests that we need to do it. Consider means we take into consideration, as well as many other factors, in the unincorporated area to ultimately lead to our final determination. So I, again, I fall back on consider.
Okay. So, Mr. Chair, how do you want to handle as we move forward here? Because we're not...
We're not making progress.
We're going to vote as a whole document.
Yeah.
So do you want me to put consider in here?
You know, if possible, I'd like to get this finalized tonight. So if necessary, we can put it to a vote. Let me ask, just informally, and this is Chris Iliff, the chairman, does anyone have any objection to the use of the term consider rather than coordinate with? There being no objections, it sounds to me like we ought to go with consider.
All righty. Got it. All right. The next paragraph was also questioned. This dealt with improved procedures and recommendations. So you're to, once again, in the revisions of the comprehensive plan and the zoning regs and subdivision regs, to recommend procedural improvements concerning decision formats, findings of fact, and legal procedures to comply with recent court rulings and legislation. So you're going to get advice that, hey, the law's changed in this area and you may need to revise it. Propose new zoning and subdivision regulation amendments based on the comprehensive plan and its recommended policies, which will streamline and improve the administration of such regulations by township, zoning boards, and staff. And new amendments should attempt to strike a balance in order to achieve quality development, protection of existing uses, and a timely, expeditious, and uncomplicated review of zoning applications. So, this was brought as concern, Mr. Chair, and I don't know if any of you had concerns with the way that was written.
I liked it. Pardon me, this is Chris Iliff, the chairman. To me, anything that speeds the process for individual applicants without doing away with the opportunity for all stakeholders to be heard is a good thing. We've all seen minor applications that got hung up for some reason or another and went on for months, and if, if we could have avoided that, I think it would have made life better for the applicant, for people who were coming to zoning board meetings to speak to the issue, and for the planning staff as well. So I'm, I'm for this, and, you know, for example, there's a Supreme Court decision that, with regard to content-neutral sign language, and we really need to be cognizant of those kinds of changes in the law that mean that, that have an impact on our zoning and subdivision regulations. So we need to, I think that covers, is covered in here as well. And I, so I, I thought the paragraph was good.
So I don't know if there was anyone else that had concerns with it? No? Okay. I'm just bringing, kind of, I tried to go through all the comments to make sure I addressed it. The next one was a really good, and again, portions of this of process were pulled also from the Board of County Commissioners' Rules of Order. So I took some of that and incorporated in to you, into your bylaws for operation. And these paragraphs were borrowed, and again, this was a good comment because it said, all members present and participating in meetings have the right to participate and debate when discussion is permitted, and it just stopped there. Well, who decides that? When does that happen? And I think that's a good understanding. Is it the chairman? Is it under? And I think what the intent was, in my opinion, in reading this, and I was not, again, the author of this, it says is permitted under, I believe, the Roberts Rules of Order and not the chairman. So debate is determined by the Roberts Rules of Order when something is to be debated, and that would be the genesis of when you have a right to participate, if that sounds permissible. The next was very good catch as well, because now that we have the hybrid method of meetings and how we're meeting occasionally, it's important that if you do appear, it's in attendance, not present. And that's an old, I'm guilty of it, from the Roberts Rules of Order, presence, but we're moving away from that to in attendance. So the next area of question was, what did we mean, and this was taken from, I believe, correct me, Rick, if I'm, he's my, going to be my backup on this, I think, this was from the state statute, that three of the 12 members shall be residents of the unincorporated area. And I think that was a direct quote from the statute. I may not agree with it, but that's how it is laid out. Am I wrong on that, Rick, or...
You know, I want to say the three members shall be residents of the unincorporated area. I want to say that came from our zoning regulations.
Yeah, I thought the genesis was in state statute. So if we could, we'll take a quick look real quick.
And I could go grab that if you want.
Do you mind, Rick? I think that would help clear up, because this was a really interesting point, and it was raised by more than one person, so that's why I'm taking a look. And I apologize, I didn't have a, as you can imagine, just getting back in town, I've been in a lot of meetings, so I didn't have a chance to pull the statute, but I think it was in there. So I'll come back to that one. The next item was just typographical errors to make sure that there's consistency throughout, and I think I probably want to put, listed in section four through section 4.07, 04, because I had listed that and before the others. Another correction, again, a typographical, we say the code of ethics. Technically, it's the code of ethics for Johnson, oh, did I put code? Johnson County Government. And what I did is, so I don't have to retype that everywhere throughout the document, I just put code of ethics, so it's, we're through. And this gives you clarification so that you know with the code of ethics. And while I'm on the code of ethics right now, when you, I know, and I'm kind of backtracking, I know there were three members that weren't present at the previous meeting that now have signed their oath of office, I've been told, and have now also signed the acknowledgement of the code of ethics. I think everybody has, I just want to make sure for the record, is that correct?
I would say, if anyone in this room has not done, signed both of those, please say so now, because you are all here.
Wow. We got it. Okay. So we can check that one off. It's been done. So the reason I bring this up, the code of ethics, within the Johnson County Code of Ethics, and that was originally, I believe, adopted, I can't remember off the top of my head, but back in the 80s at that time, there was noted in the code of ethics, a form you were to fill out as board members and/or elected officials were doing this, where you fill out, and it's different from the state form of substantial interest, it's a form where it basically, where you disclose any conflicts. So it's asking for information. So when you went to get on this board, you made an application, you may have given your background, answered a few questions. Well, this goes a little bit further to get some information. And the purpose of that form is so that as items come in front of you as a board, someone's looking to see if you have conflicts. In addition, as we get down here below, in, under conflicts of interest, it's important that legally, in our department, our legal department, through Rick Lynn or myself, or someone in our legal department, if you have a question of whether you have a conflict or you have a concern, you're raising that to legal counsel so we can consult with you as to whether you have a conflict. This form will help us too, so that staff and legal are keeping a price, so that if something comes up, it's on our radar to make sure we have, visit with you to have a discussion. What we don't want is happening that people are coming forward, you know, during the middle of considering an item, saying, hey, you have a conflict. And, you know, at this point, as new chief counsel, almost a year here now, almost, I'm at nine months, I think, 10 months. So at this point, what is really important, and I'll take responsibility of this, is they had not had that process in place. And what happens is, you're, you're telling people, but no one over here on our end legally is reviewing it. So what we're doing now, as I explained from the last meeting, is we're trying to get processes in place now, so that when you come to counsel, you can come to legal counsel, and I would prefer you come through the legal department, and that we speak with you and give you an opinion and answer your question. That's your... That's your golden ticket, because if we said it's okay, then you have the blessing of the legal that you do not have a conflict to go forward on that item. So, coming down to conflicts of interest, and I want to spend some time on this, because this was a discussion item as well and comments. And I think this is correct.
May I interrupt just a second?
Oh, yeah.
With regard to resignation, one small.
Oh, yeah.
Item, and it says, "The person can resign in writing by giving his or her resignation to the Planning Commission chairperson." But then it says, "If they're doing it verbally, give it to the director of planning, who will thereafter alert the clerk of the board." Question, do we have a clerk of the board, or is it a secretary of the board?
I think you are correct. It is secretary, correct? Am I right, Jay?
Yes, Jay, I think that is correct.
I mean, this is really minor.
No, I think that is, words have meaning, and we have to make sure that when they're looking at this years from now, we have the right secretary of the board. Okay. Thank you for calling that to our attention. The next one was something I have to agree. What we're looking here is if someone has a pecuniary interest, and that means a financial interest of some interest, and it could be other, you know, not just pecuniary, but it could, you could have an interest in a matter directly or indirectly. We're looking for someone who derives some direct and tangible personal thing, not likely to, because that could be anybody. So this was a good catch to kind of narrow it down, to make sure we're really critical what we're talking about in this area. And then, the process of what happens when you have a conflict, "You shall be disqualified from debating, discussing, and voting." Again, we did not have these bylaws in process up to now. This was not in place. We had been using the other bylaws that were placed, pushed aside because the board was dissolved. But now, so, Rick, you have that answer?
I do.
Okay. And the drum roll.
The state statute says, I'm sorry, Rick Lind with the legal department, the state statute says that the commission shall consist of not less than nine or more than 12 members who shall be appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. Nine of such members shall be residents of the unincorporated area of the county.
Not three?
The zoning regulations say, three of the 12 members shall be residents of the incorporated area of the county. I think what occurred is the zoning regulations clarify that although nine need to be from the unincorporated, three will be from the cities. Although the statute doesn't say that, that's what the Board of County Commissioners put in, and the planning commission would have recommended that three come from the cities.
So what's written is correct, that this is pegged, that three of the 12 members shall be residents of the incorporated, not the unincorporated. So inferring, and so for clarification, let's put, we put above that 12 shall consist of 12 members who are appointed, nine of the members shall be residents of the unincorporated area, three of the 12 members shall be residents of the incorporated area of the county.
Randy Hutchins, I'm sorry, I don't see that three of them need to be from the unincorporated area in state statute.
Incorporated, means cities.
Incorporated, exactly. I do not see that in state statute.
The state statute does not say that.
Okay.
The county zoning regulations do say that. This body, when they adopted our zoning regulations, recommended to the Board of County Commissioners that the three positions, which are not spoken for in the statute, will go to people who live within the cities.
So let's be clear, the three people by state statute do not need to be appointed by people living in the incorporated area.
The state statute does not require that three people from the cities be on the planning commission. The zoning regulations do say that.
Okay. So to be clear, that's not the state statute zoning regulations, that is at the county level zoning regulations.
Which are applicable to you right now.
Thank you.
So you are correct, but that's applicable to you. So that's why that's, but I'm glad you asked the question, because this is why we need to make sure we have that dialogue. At this point, since you are the planning commission, I will ask Jay and Karen and Sean there, is the intent for this to come back, the zoning regulations, where there could be a revision of that to take that out? I didn't know. Are you considering that right now?
I guess, I don't know about this particular portion. I guess we were not.
Okay.
Commissioner Grisay, is there, in, because this is a recommending body, and whatever we recommend for our bylaws will go before the county board of commissioners, who would be the ultimate arbiter. To my fellow commissioner's point, if we want to make a change here, are we empowered to do so? Or would you have to amend the originating zoning regulation first, prior to the change?
Yes, but what I was going to do is just omit this maybe, right now? Let nature take its course. But this is the current law. Law being regulation.
Commissioner Grisay, does the zoning regulations have jurisdiction over the bylaws of the planning commission?
Well, the zoning regulations were adopted by the Board of County Commissioners, those are the law of Johnson County. And therefore, anything that we do is subject to the zoning regulations.
Lindsay Grisay completely agree, but if we are proposing a change, you know, and not that I'm saying that we would, but if we were to propose a change here, it would still go before the county board of commissioners, who would be the ultimate one that would change it. I guess I was just curious, maybe recommendation from counsel is, we should simply omit it and allow the originating regulation to be amended first, rather than having conflicting regulations?
Or, my recommendation, as I said at the last meeting, is, I think you need to be reviewing these annually. So why don't we let the processes take place? Because there's a lot, as you know, to go into, and just so you know, you serve for zoning regulations too, that come from you to review. So let the process take its course. If it changes, when you come up for your annual review, or biannual, whenever you do that, then you will review it then and take it out. But for now, this does apply to you.
Commissioner Grisay, one last thing, the highlighted sentence is not absolutely necessary to be in the bylaws, in my estimation. If there is an existing zoning board regulation, it would apply regardless of whether this sentence was in there or not. And by omitting it from here, it would make it easier, we wouldn't have to amend two things, we'd only have to amend one if it ends up coming before later.
The only problem with that is, this is a document that people are going to be looking towards for moving forward. So as we fill, I think we have one vacancy still on this board, we have a member of 12. And if someone leaves the board, there's going to be a vacancy filled. And it's an easier for, I mean, it's been pretty much a struggle to pull all these resolutions, pull everything together. I'm trying to get you organized in a manner that you have one document that is applicable when someone looks here as to compensation, you know what I'm saying, composition and qualifications. So at this point, my recommendation legally is leave it in. And annually, make a note of it, Jay, Will, that this is something you revisit at a later date. Because that is the way the process is working right now. So.
We've spent a lot of time on this area. I would recommend that we move on unless somebody wants to make a motion that it be deleted.
Randy Hutchins, I think this is extremely important. Quite frankly, this, you know, Planning Development Commission is essentially the unincorporated city council. So that's why, I think it's extremely important that we look at this. I can agree with legal counsel that we can go ahead and leave it as is, but with the understanding that in near meetings, we can take this back up and we can amend this again if that's satisfactory to the commission.
By the, this is Chris Ilof, by the nods around the table, it sounds like it's acceptable.
Okay. On 4.02, term of office, just for clarification, I didn't highlight this. And generally in bylaws, you also use this as a genesis, the beginning document or origin, and you never had one, so this is your first to do it. So when you formed, you, the original board, when they were appointed, it was one, two, and three years, you were in staggered terms. You've now evolved as a board since 1984 of being reformed, where now you serve for appointed three-year terms. So that's what that language means. But we have to include the genesis of where you started, and so that's why that language was included.
Commissioner Grisay, and I apologize, this, it just feels very confusing to me when I read it. It said, "The members first appointed by the board," I mean, does this mean initially back in 1984?
Yes.
So, I mean, can we start off with, in 1984, comma, because to me, when I read this, it appeared to me to say, members are first appointed to the board for terms of one, two, or three years. The terms are divided equally as possible between the members, and then thereafter, it almost seemed after the three years, then you get a, you know what I mean? It didn't, it didn't read to me as two different points in time or an evolutionary concept.
My, my problem with putting, I don't know if they followed the law. I don't know, because they didn't have the bylaws. So I can only go by, at this point, moving forward, so I'd be comfortable with adding, the members initially appointed, get rid of first, the members initially appointed by the board, and it's not appointed by you. It was pointed by the.
B O C C.
Oh, yeah, that's the board. B O C C shall be appointed for terms of.
I mean, Lindsay Grisay, would it be possible to say, "The members initially appointed in 1984 by the board"?
I don't know if they were appointed in 1984.
Then Lindsay Grisay speaking, then, I'm not sure what is the statutory or regulatory importance of the first two sentences. Doesn't it just matter what we're doing now?
I understand your concern, but generally speaking, in bylaws, it's a document to show from the origin of the board and creation and moving forward. And so this needs to reflect it. And this is from, I believe, again, the state statute, when it, in 1984, when it was created, it said, "When you initially start up." Am I wrong?
Yeah, no, you're correct. You know, if you say, "The members initially pointed by the board were appointed for terms of one, two, and three years," that would indicate that that's what happened in the past. And going forward, you're doing three-year terms.
And I, Mr. Lynn, this is Lindsay Grisay, instead of thereafter, we could say currently or something presently.
About presently.
Yeah. I, thank you. I think that alleviates my confusion.
No, I understand, and thank you for the questions. Okay. Moving forward to 4.07, again, typographical error of me neglecting to put section. 4.704, we got down to conflicts of interest. Oh, okay. So down here, conflicts of interest, back to 4.09, where we were. At the last, down here, it says, "In case of an inquiry or complaint filed by a member of public." That was probably not a good thing to put, that it would be the chairman that would determine, or the board will determine whether there's a disqualification. It's the county attorney's office that would, or I would put, the county attorney for, of the JCPC that determines whether there's a disqualification. And then, because we're making the legal determination and/or someone came forward, you can't vote, because let's say you vote, hey, it's not a disqualification, and we're saying, yes, it is, it's legally a conflict. So it's the attorney that should be making that decision. And then, if that decision is not agreed upon, then it goes under the Code of Ethics to your ethic advisory board, where that decision will be made by that board oversight of what the county attorney is recommending. And the county attorney, as I explained the last meeting, would recuse themselves, that's my intent, to recuse ourselves from that board, because we made a decision at the lower level that's being reviewed.
Lindsay Grisay here, a quick question. There's a lot that this commission does upon the advice and recommendations, getting advice from legal counsel, and we take it into consideration along with the planning staff. I'm curious why this process would be removed from the purview of the voting members of this board, rather than if, you know, the, you know, you as the county attorney, if you had a recommendation for a recusal or conflict, to present that information before the board, if the particular commissioner did not want to recuse, and allow that commissioner to speak in a public forum about the potential conflict and allow us to vote on it. I guess I'm surprised this is different than the others.
Actually, the Code of Ethics that you have, says the chief counsel is to be the one, so I could have put me in here, which I could do, instead of the county attorney. I just was trying to keep it, you know, with the attorney for your board. But generally speaking, it is the chief counsel that makes that decision, and interpretation of the law, and renders an advisory opinion and opinions on these matters. So, and as my duties under the charter, it is one of my duties to interpret, you know, conflicts. That would not be appropriate to have a board voting on whether you have a conflict. That is not your role legally, because there could still be a conflict, and you voted, hey, that's not a conflict, and we're saying, no, legally it is. You're still going to have the person going through the process of the ethic board, because we're the ones charged with looking at the law of whether that's a conflict. It's our responsibility.
Yeah, Commissioner Grisay, I would never dream of taking it out of your purview, right? Throughout this entire process, you've given legal opinions of the board, and I would say it's completely within your purview, and we would need and benefit from your legal opinion. But typically, the arbiter of decisions within the commission are made by the commissioners and not by the chief counsel. You give an advisory opinion and inform us, but then we make the decision and vote as a board. I guess I'm just curious.
Okay. How about the chief counsel will make a recommendation with your vote for a majority of that?
That's, that's the only.
I just didn't want to put it out in the public forum, that I, I think it's important that it gives and empowers an individual, that if we come to them and say, hey, you've got a conflict confidentially, they can recuse themselves without having to make, you know, a whole ordeal over it. And what I'm trying to do is, it's like a personnel matter, I'm trying to protect people too.
Lindsay Grisay, I completely appreciate and think that's the correct thing. To me, that would only be a process if the member disagreed with your conclusion that there was a conflict and wanted to, in a public forum, voice why they disagreed, and then you could give your advisory opinion up for a vote. I, I'm the only one talking, though. I'd be curious about my fellow.
This is Mike Levin. I apologize, I'm a little confused now. There's a lot of back and forth, I think I understand, but, but are we saying then that, Ms. Trent, please correct me if I'm wrong, your interpretation, would it be that then you would provide a legal opinion, and then it would go to the board members to actually make the vote? I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
So let's say that I was to make a recommendation that one of the members had a conflict, I speak to that person, and they say, hey, I'm not going to recuse myself. Then it would go in a public meeting to say, hey, I'm making a legal recommendation that this person has a conflict you're about to, and then you're going to vote on it. And the problem that presents itself, in my opinion, is if I'm saying, as an attorney, and I'm also, I'm recusing, I'm on the advisory board too, but I'm recusing myself because I'm making this early determination, the problem that presents itself is if you vote and say, no, it's okay, you, you don't have a conflict, and I'm legally saying, I'm still going to. going to move to the next level, because that person has a conflict and should not be there. Now, if I'm wrong, then I'm wrong. The board will make that determination. If I'm right, and that person voted, they will be removed from the board, potentially.
Will they be removed, this is Mike Levin again.
Potentially.
Will they be removed from the board or removed from that, that vote?
Potentially, they can be removed from the board, or from, they can be removed from the board, they can be let it go, or they can modify, like your vote didn't count.
Okay, and who makes that determination?
So in your situation, with the Code of Ethics, it would go to the ethic advisory board, and I believe they make the recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, and the Board of County Commissioners vote to what is the, they can make a recommendation that you should be removed from the board, or your vote didn't count, which could then kill the item that went forward. And the problem is, that item, like you're an advisory board, is moving up to the B O C C, we're waiting over here to determine whether your vote could count, and it may be a close call, and then we're in a very interesting situation. And so our, our recommendation, that's why I'm really firm that it should be what we say would be the recommendation. Now, you can recuse yourself, then take it up to appeal later on, but the bottom line is, at this point, I really have a concern that legislation could be affected by this one or two people. You say, we have a recuse, you say, I'm wrong, and then it goes on, and then it's going to come right back, and we've wasted all this time with legislation.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Trent, two quick questions. That process that you described, where a person may be removed from the board, is that process set in stone, or is that part of what we're looking at?
It's set in stone, it's in your Code of Ethics.
And that's what we signed last board meeting.
And that's been in effect since the eighties.
Right, so then, the second question I'd have for you is, so if, my, my hesitation, given that, you know, members of this committee have gotten letters about recusal on the solar, you know, regulations, is that, my concern is, is that, and I mean this with absolutely no disrespect, as you know, it gives the county attorney a ton of power, meaning if the second that a suggestion for recusal is made, that person is obligated now to recu, and now they are taking themselves out of, you know, participating in hearings, and then there's a whole separate process that I'm not sure about the timing, how fast that process is. Whereas, to me, at least the way that I've seen it happen on other boards, is, you know, we appreciate very much the opinions from, you know, our county attorneys, it gives us a lot to think about. If for some reason, a commission, and I know all of the commissioners here take those very seriously and read those, and, you know, really look deep within themselves to make sure that there's not a conflict, but if they truly believe there isn't, then it seems that, at least that commissioner should have the right to plead their case if they want in public, to be a part and participate as we are appointed to do.
I am, I'll be candid, I've been doing this a long time, over 30 years, I've never heard this discussion, and I'll tell you why.
Neither have I.
Because of volunteer, you're a volunteer board.
Chairman, we need to move this along. There's only so many hours that I'm willing to commit to this every week, and that does not include hearings on recusals with issues that we all have to have a debate on. I'm not going to do that, I'm not going to participate in that. We need to move along on this. I'm content with the language as it is, and I would just ask for kind of a straw vote here. Maybe I'm wrong, but I'm content to let the, the county attorney make these decisions, and I don't want this conversation to go on any longer. So, all those who, all those who are in favor...
Wait, hold on, this Kelly Grass, I'd like to just say one thing. The only thing I'm concerned about is better transparency, because there was a lot of stuff where different people were supposedly going to be recused, they were asked to be recused, but we got no information. So I don't care which way we go, but there's got to be transparency.
All right.
And I also feel like everybody needs to remember, we're all equal on this board.
Everybody who thinks that the board should have the final say on recusal, and that the language should be put in here, indicate by raising your right hand. I see two.
Is that consistent with what we got there today?
Would I put in, just right, the way I've revised it right now?
Right.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, Mr. Chairman, Rick Lynn with the Legal Department, regardless of whether you give yourself the final authority on this, it can't stand legally.
Absolutely.
And the reason it can't is because the Board of County Commissioners is the final decision maker. So you can't tie the Board of County Commissioners' hands by a vote on a recusal. The reason it has to go to an advisory body is they're going to make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. So I think it would be a nullity to give yourself that authority.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn.
Randy Hutchins, but at the same time, we're recommending organization today. So, I mean, essentially what we're doing is recommending to the Board of County Commissioners of what we believe, but...
Well, the way I heard it was...
We're recommending, so it is going to go to the Board of County Commissioners, and they will make the final determination.
Well, the way I heard it was you were giving yourself the final decision or determination.
Lindsey Grisay, maybe a happy medium, you know, Mr. Lynn, to your point, is, in the interim, the board can vote pending the decision of the County Board of Commissioners, and so that would at least give an interim decision to a board member pending resolution from the County Board of Commissioners. That might be a happy compromise?
Well, unfortunately, the happy compromise doesn't exist, because to form an advisory board of the four members bringing it, there's no time limits in the current Code of Ethics. There's a lot of issues that currently exist that it would not, and there renders a thing. But if you want to proceed with this, this is fine, this document, as you vote as a whole, then would go to the B O C C for their consideration.
Well, again, it's my recommendation that the original language with regard to the chief counsel making a recommendation to, on this, be the, the final word, and that we not have debates or a vote of this board, you know, but we need to move on. We're not going to be at 10 o'clock to discuss something that absolutely no member of the public cares about, and which is very unlikely to happen at any time in the future, because it's never happened in the past. So, again, all of those who feel like the, we'll do it, we'll just do it in a simple raise of hand, if you feel like this board should have the opportunity to vote on the recommendation of the county attorney to have someone recuse themselves, raise your right hand. I see three hands risen.
I'm abstaining, because I feel like it hasn't been made real clear, and we're just being bullied into making a decision right now.
Well, yeah, I guess we're moving along.
And if anybody does not want to be here, they should just leave.
We are moving along, that's correct. Next item.
So I'm leaving this in right now, that, because if I saw the total, I, just for clarification, Mr. Chairman, if I think I saw the hands risen, that they agreed with this, as written right now, with the majority...
Three out of the 11 here, correct?
Agreed.
Which means, which means eight out of the 11 here...
Agree with this.
Agree with the position taken by you on this.
Okay, I'll put that in then. Okay, and then, moving down, telecommunication, I, this is a clerical error, there shouldn't be a point 01, there were others in the initial draft before it came to you, but I deleted that to move that up. The, and I believe, believe it or not, that concludes all of the amendments.
Lindsey Grisay, apologies, I think there was one additional one that I had emailed, and apologies for delaying in advance. I don't think it was clear in these bylaws about whether there was language in here that seemed to indicate or prohibit our discussions with members of the public, at least, I guess I wasn't clear whether this, these bylaws, you know, expressly permitted, as the bylaws in the city of Lenexa, the city of Overland Park, and many of our neighboring cities do, which allow members of the commission to have conversations with members of the public, so long as they're disclosed in the following meeting.
I didn't put any of that in there that you could not.
But, but there...
It's not in the bylaws at all.
Understand, there's, at least the way that I read some of the open meetings, it could be interpreted that way, and I was surprised that there wasn't an express allowance for that, so long as the commissioners were obligated to disclose, and I'm, I'm not sure what the hesitation would be to allowing that.
I am not sure, well, the reason, it isn't a hesitation, believe me, I am into transparency and accountability. The issue that's presenting is, I don't see in this document where it said that you were prohibited from, as you had put, prohibited from speaking with the public. Now, I did put out to you, when we did the training last week, or last month, a document that went into ex parte communication, and I've had dialogue with the commissioners about ex parte communication. And as part of that, we discussed how that looks and what was going, but there was nothing that was put into this document related to that. But you did bring up one thing I did overlook, that a person from the public did bring up about public participation. I am going to need to remove some language within 6.12. It does violate First Amendment rights, some of what's in it. This was borrowed from the Rules of Order in, for the Board of County Commissioners. This was direct language taken from the current Rules of Order that were in effect for the Board of County Commissioners from 2009, originally from '07, and this language was in it. There has been case law subsequent that has found that some of this would be inappropriate. The meeting that the chairman does, he's aware of that Supreme Court decisions, and so he allows people to talk, and they come up with different things that they have on outfits and so forth, but this was something that does need to be revised, and that was brought to my attention. So right now, it does have it in the public participation. I would recommend that if you move forward with the approval of this, it'd be contingent upon a legal review and removal of some of this language that is in conflict with the First Amendment right. And that would be consistent with what we're recommending to the Board of County Commissioners when they amend their Rules of Order.
Jim Neese, I've got a question. During the last county commissioners' meeting, there was some discussion, it was my, what I drew from what your comments were, the narrow discussions that can be held...
Right.
The county commissioners. And I left that meeting, and I think it would apply to us, is I left that meeting thinking that, from what you said, that, that if there was a pending, if there was a pending decision, a ruling that was going to be made, that there was to be no discussion by elected, our elected county, Board of County Commissioners, and it kind of implied to us here or on the zoning board, the way I heard you, is, is that, that that was the case. Would I read you wrong there in that?
Yes, and I clarified too, to the board, what it, what we're saying...
You said it, you said it publicly, so I would like to hear you.
Right, what I said, though, in context, is that when the public, you're getting ready to make a decision on an application, or anything where we know there's a potential of quasi-hearing, like for me, a public hearing, that they're going to have a public hearing on the second part related to the storage battery facility, they're having a public hearing. And when you're about to go and hear a public hearing, just like you, you're supposed to listen to the public comments and to consider those. But if you have somebody speaking to you, as a commissioner on a board, talking to you about their position, that position should be put, in my opinion, on the record, that I spoke with such and such, and this is what they said, and this is what is considered, or what I had suggested to the commissioners, is direct that person to put it in writing, so it's put with planning to made part of the record. So right now, what's going on, on the solar, you'll notice, and it should be up on the site, if a commissioner had received discussions outside, we're making sure that those are reduced to writing and put up, so everyone knows what they've considered when they came forward to make their decision.
Lindsey Grisay, Ms. Trent, that's, that, that process that you just described is exactly the process that I don't think is described in these bylaws, and there's a lot of discussion about public participation, public hearing, but there's no obligation, as I read it, in these bylaws, for a commissioner member to disclose ex parte communications that, you know, or even an allowance for that activity. And I was just curious, since many of the other townships around here, just surveying them, have a section in their bylaws for that, I wasn't sure if that process, as easy as it could be, could, should be memorialized, to obligate us to disclose and to allow us to participate in those discussions, should a member of the public reach out to us directly?
Well, Ms. Grisay, you, is it Grisay?
Grisay.
Grisay.
I'm married into it, so you can mispronounce it.
Interestingly enough, Commissioner O'Hara had emailed me today, and she had emailed me, she had made the record request of all of the communities, so I'm sure you're aware of that.
Sure.
And in her request, she did email me today, that exact clause that you're referring to, and I can add that to this document if you so desire. Let me read that to you. So this is from Lenexa. There were two documents she sent, one's from Overland Park and one's from Lenexa. You're preferring the one from Lenexa, is that correct?
Lindsey Grisay, I, I have no preference, but for example, I have an email from Commissioner O'Hara directed toward me. Right now, there's no obligation for me to disclose that communication to the public.
Oh, no, I'm not asking that.
And it seems like it should be disclosed, so the public can have a full record.
I've got one, I've got one quick question to kind of back up a minute. Jim Neese, is what you're saying is, let's say, and we'll use a solar thing as an example or anything, I don't care if it's a cell tower...
Let's not use the solar.
Oh, yeah, let's not, let's just use an application, a, a, a cell tower that comes in for us, and somebody for and against, and so on and so forth. Public hearing, there's going to be another public hearing, and the applicant has a meeting, or, or one of us has a meeting with staff to discuss the previous activities in the public hearing. Is that inappropriate?
No, not at all. You can do that with staff. We're talking about public, you can talk to the public, but what we're saying is, if you're going to consider an application, or you're considering having a public hearing, we want to make sure that you've put all of what your communications with the public are on the record. What I did, I was in your position, what I do is, I would just say, hey, would you put it in writing what you told me, and submit it? Then it's made part of the record. It's not putting the onus on you, but it's just saying, hey, I like your comments, other commissioners would like to hear what you have to say. They'd like to hear what persuaded you or did not persuade you, so that everyone has the same information when you come forward to decide. So all I'm suggesting is, we could add language, the ones from Lenexa and from Overland, however, say, an application, we could just say that members of the commission should disclose the nature of any ex parte contacts and any information obtained through those contacts they may have on a bearing on their decision. We could put that in here. We generally, I could put it in, you don't have to have it in. What my hope is that every year, Rick will be in front of this board in an open meeting, training you on these issues that come up, that you have questions through the course of the year and as they come along, and you don't need to put it in. If you would like, I can add it, for clarification. We can call it ex parte communication.
Lindsey Grisay here, I would appreciate if it was added, just so that we don't have a situation where we inadvertently stub our toe at some later point. And I think the only clarification I would add to the language you just suggested was only disclosure of ex parte communications with the public, to, you know, obviously we can reach out to planning staff for opinions, and I don't know that those necessarily need to be made public unless we have a desire to do so.
Yeah, I think there's room there.
Yeah, I think there's room merit in that. Chris Iliff, Chairman.
Okay, I'm adding it right now.
Mark Huggins, at what point does discussions among commission members affect the open meeting laws?
So, are you saying that potentially, if you, as a member on the Planning Commission, have a conversation with a Board of County Commissioner about an item that you considered, is it before you considered, or after?
I'm not only talking of the Board of County Commissioners, but I'm other Planning Commission Commissioners, and before the meeting.
They should not be talking to you, because they will be, the commission will be deciding the issue that's coming before you. That's why I told some of the commissioners tonight, you know, you're going to be deciding this, so you shouldn't be behind this, because you're going to vote, and the vote is the most powerful thing you have. So, at this point, that should not be occurring prior to your vote. After your vote, yes, you can talk.
Lindsey Grissay, Ms. Trent, I thought the only prohibition on commissioners talking were if we formed a quorum, if there was enough members of a sidebar conversation to form a quorum. This is the first I've heard that-
So, you think-
-we can't have individual conversations with other commissioners outside of this.
Well, the, the issue it presents itself is, is that an ex parte communication? Are they acting as a member of a public or a BOCC member telling you how to vote and what to do? I mean, there's questions-
Pardon me, Ms. Trent, I think there's two different conversations going on here. One is conversations within the Planning Commission itself, the other is conversations between Planning Commissioners and Boards of County Commissioners. Your position is clear on not talking to BOCC members with regard to issues that are going to come for a vote there. But Ms. Grissay's question is, and, and I think Mr. Huggins' initial question, related to, at what point do we violate the Open Meetings Act by discussing a matter that will come for a vote among ourselves? And I think that the law there is pretty clear, that it has to be less than, it, it cannot be a quorum. Anything that would be a quorum or more, that would be unlawful.
And also serial, so you could have serial, if you, like, for instance, one of you speak to another, who speaks to another, who speaks to another, and you're going down the line, and you get to a quorum, then that becomes a violation of the Open Meetings Act.
Right. And we can have, we can have training on that-
Yes.
-with regard to Open Meetings laws and, and that sort of thing. But I think the, the question that you have, Mark, can you and I have a conversation about an item that is coming before us? And the answer to that is yes. But if, if you're sending me an email, and I'm sending the email on to another member, who sends it on to another member, to another member, then we might have an issue.
And the reason I ask that question is, it doesn't, I don't see where that's addressed here.
Yeah, that is, that is, see, we don't dress everything in the bylaws regarding open meetings, open records, there's all these other laws that come into play. Those are usually through training, Rick will give you as a board, and so we can schedule a time that we can train you on the Open Record, Open Meetings Act, and how that works, and so that you would know.
Mr. Commissioner, the one thing I would say is, given that the penalties, it appears, are very harsh for violations of, you know, can be pretty harsh, and given that we can write whatever, you know, whatever we want in here, we don't have to rely on a training to tell us what we can do. We could state in here that, you know, commissioners are allowed to talk to each other, as long as there's not a quorum. We could write that in here, and then it would be clear.
My, my, my concern with that, Chairman Iliff, is that, basically, we would have to put the entire Kansas Open Meetings Act in here in order to have it in one place. And that is the purpose of training, and for people who've served on this board for, you know, a couple of years or more, they've all been through this training. For those of us who've been on this board, or zoning boards and other boards for many years, we've, we've gone through it many times. I, I think that the, Ms. Trent's statement, that you don't need to put every law that applies to us into our bylaws, makes sense, because in addition, we want to have everything in one place, we also want a document that's readable, and is short enough that everybody can understand what's going on in it. And if we put in, you know, chapters from the Kansas statutes that apply to us, then we wouldn't have bylaws anymore, we'd have a duplication of the Kansas statutes.
Chairman Iliff, I, I agree with you. The, the one comment that I heard, that I, I'd like some clarification, if possible, Ms. Trent, is the county Board of Commissioner member was an elected official, and the person who appointed me, you know, I hope and aspire to fulfill the goals and, you know, policies of what that person, who was elected by the community, would do. And in doing so, I've often engaged with communications with that Board of County Commissioner member on pending matters, to make sure that my votes and my questions are aligned with what the public voted for. And so, I guess it surprises me to hear, and, and I think maybe I misunderstood you, that if there's a pending matter, that we would somehow be prohibited from reaching out to the Board of County Commissioner, when we are appointed to, in part, kind of fulfill their mandate that they feel from the voters. Could you maybe give me some more clarification on that?
I'll get back with you on a legal opinion on that verbally. I think right now, I think we've taken a lot of time on this, and quite frankly, it's going down a road. I'm not sure what's going on. So, let's just focus on the ex parte communication. I did add some language while you were discussing on that issue, that, that this would be disclosed to planning staff. I want you to have the ability to, that if the person didn't, you can do it during an open meeting. I think that that's important, that you can provide, that planning staff, or during, you, you can disclose it to planning staff, or during an open meeting, during a JCPC meeting, and that way, it's made part of the record. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Jay Leipzig, I just wanted to point out one additional change on page five in section 5.01. Ms. Trent missed that. There is a, and we talked about these two items at our, at our previous meeting, about the annual meeting of the, of the Planning Commission, moving it from February to June, and that removing the, the term limit clause on that, the election of officers.
Oh, excuse me, I forgot that. Thank you. So, we put regular February meeting, that did not get changed there. Thank you for doing that.
That's in section 5.01.
And then also, this right here.
It should be in, should be to June peg, rather than February.
Okay. And then, each officer shall serve one-year term, and each officer may be reelected for two additional consecutive terms, so that's three years they can serve in the position. Right?
Yeah, that, that sentence was struck. Each officer may be reelected for two additional-
Oh, we got rid of that. Okay. All right. It's just one-year term, is all they can serve? Is that what the board wants?
That is what we've historically been doing, is one-year term. That was, that was the draft that was before, so.
Yep. That, that doesn't mean they can't be elected to a successive one-year term.
Okay, so we just got rid of it. It's just every year it's reelected. Okay. Okay.
I mean, if you, if you all are in agreement on that, Jay Leipzig.
This is Kelly Rast. I, I do have a question, but like, going back to where we were talking about, just to clarify, like, our term, no, 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 our, our term when we're appointed is a three-year term.
Yes, that's-
But we're going to use the chairman's office term only being one year.
That's what, I'm sitting here, yeah, that's a good point. I don't, that's up to you, what you want. If you want it to be three years, it can be.
Mr. Chairman, Rick Lind, I think the way the statute is written-
Oh, that's right, it says that.
-is that the intent was that the chairman's term will be one year, such that you can't do, like they do for the Federal Reserve Chairman, and elect him to a ten-year term. His term should be for one year. I do not believe the language of the statute prohibits the chairman from being reelected to successive one-year terms, so they're limited to a one-year term, but that does not mean they can only serve one year.
So, you could serve 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, just as long as you're elected every year?
Which is consistent with what Commissioner Rast had just clarified.
Okay. All right. Is there any other, is this ex parte language okay, then, what I added?
Lindsey Grissay, it's fine with me, it's fine with everybody else.
I think it look, I think it looks good. So, the question we have now before us is whether we take a vote on this with the changes that have been made tonight, and they suggested minor revisions that Ms. Trent has discussed, or whether we put this over to next month, where we just take a quick look at it and do a final vote.
Kelly Rast, is there any way that this can be, like, rewritten up and gotten out to us, like, in 10 days, so that then we can review the whole thing written out completely and double-check it, and then if we have any extra questions, we can send in to you an email, and then be ready to discuss or vote? But if we can get a revised copy?
I have it right now, ready for you.
Roger Mason, Roger Mason here.
Go ahead.
I would move that we take the chairman's suggestion and accept the changes that have been recommended here, and send this on up to the BOCC for approval.
Chairman, super quick, I thought that you said that you had to do additional research on a First Amendment issue, and so I was curious, I'm, I'm all for voting on it, I'm just curious, would it be weird to approve something that isn't finalized, or would you rather have one additional month to delete the parts that are inappropriate due to the First Amendment?
I'm, I think I delete, okay, I'm going to stand corrected here. I think I removed the troublesome piece already. I apologize. I'm trying to think. I, I knew that we had an issue with it, but I do think you can approve it, subject to that piece being legally reviewed. Just to make sure, I would just want to make sure I have the right statement. I know that I took out some things, but I want to make sure. I'm just saying, I don't want to pass it along, and then there's something concerning in there.
Yeah, Lindsey Grissay, this, which is why I think it might, I don't know if there's a need, if, if it would be beneficial to give our legal group one additional time to make sure that the language is finally written. I'm fine either way.
This is Mike Levin. I would actually like an opportunity to read it in the whole, after the revisions, before we vote on it, so I would like to put it off for one month.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded, that we move this on to the Board of County Commissioners as it now stands with, subject to minor revisions by the Legal Department. All those in, in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Let's do a roll call vote, if we would. We'll start down at, at the end here. State your name and, and how you vote, whether you're in favor or opposed.
Randy Downing, I'm in favor.
Kelly Rast, opposed.
Roger Mason in favor.
Mark Huggins in favor.
George London in favor.
Lindsey Grissay, opposed.
Randy Hutchins opposed.
Chris Iliff opposed.
Mike Levin opposed.
Jim Neese opposed.
Dave Johns opposed.
Okay, the, the motion goes down. So, effectively, that gives you one more month, and bring it back. And, and I certainly would agree with Commissioner Rast's suggestion, that if you can get it out in the next few days, that would be great. Hopefully, this discussion will just be a matter of minutes next time.
Okay. This is Kelly Rast. I do have one question, though, too, when you were talking about, and I, I was thinking you were going to go back and do more research on the 6.12 section.
What's that?
The public participation with the freedom of speech and that kind of stuff, but then you said you were not, so I do have some concerns as far as, I mean, like, who decides what's-
No, I got, I, I was very confused up here. I kept thinking, I, I can't remember if I removed some language already out of it, so I do need to look at it and confirm that it needs to be revised. So, it's my intent to take that clause and to review it to make sure, because I don't want you to have anything that would be a violation of our Constitution in there, and I want to make sure, because there's been changes in the law.
All right. We either need to take a break, or we need to have a, a brief discussion of the proposed discussion of the 2022 priorities for the Planning Commission. Need a break? All right, we're, Chairman's decision, we'll, we'll take a short break, five minutes. The next item on the agenda is the continued discussion of 2022 priorities of the Planning Commission, and I'm going to let Mr. Leipzig make a few comments about this.
Thank you, Mr. Terry Leipzig, the Planning Director. My comments this evening will be fairly brief on this item. First of all, I wanted to tell the Planning Commissioners I appreciate the responses we've received. Those are all part of your packet, as, as well as staff's, Planning Staff recommendations for key topics. Essentially, we are still working on these items. There's, there's quite a bit of work here. It's great ideas and great suggestions. Given the time that we have tonight, and the amount of discussion we've had, I guess what I would propose, and I mentioned this at our, our previous meeting, of having a workshop or a study, study session with the Planning Commission, I would like to do that, if you all are agreeable to it. Some, some dates that I'm thinking, and as we, as we move forward, our April 26 meeting, we'll be discussing the bylaws on April 26, which would be our regular meeting in the month of April. We could set up a work session with this Planning Commission on Thursday 20, the 28th, late in the afternoon, or a better suggestion, I think, would be if you all are available on a Friday afternoon. For example, on Friday, May 6 would be a possible date, or the following week, if, if that would work for everybody. I just, well, we've got a full quorum tonight, a full group. I thought I would just throw some dates out there and see if you all would be available. Frankly, from staff's perspective, it doesn't matter. I, I think May 6 might be the best date, just because we're going to have a fairly full April, I believe. Looks like May is getting full as well, but I think that would be a better use for our time for this evening, and just kind of really look at this stuff, because some of these suggestions, we're still looking at, at some of the legal repercussions, what we could do, some legal options of, of, of some of the suggestions we've had, so I, I could appreciate that additional time as well. But how does everyone, calendars look for May 6? Would that work?
Mike Levin, I'm not available on May 6.
Kelly Rast, I'm not available either.
Okay.
And, yep.
All right, let me grab my, my phone working here. So, if we did May 13?
Lindsey Grissay, I'm available.
I'm available.
Mike Levin, I'm available.
Kelly Rast, available.
Okay.
Dave Johns available.
Okay. We could, and I'm just hypothetically, we could start it at noon, and maybe go from noon until 3:00 on that afternoon, and we'll, of course, have lunch for you that, that day. But I think just having, you know, three hours or so, or two hours, we could really focus on this topic and, and have a presentation with some staff, also possibly public works as well, I think would be beneficial for everybody. So, February, or, excuse me, May 13 would work? Okay, I see nodding heads.
Thank you, Mr. Leipzig.
Randy Hutchins, so, just to be clear, is this going to be more of a working meeting? Or, what I don't want it to be is people bringing in presentations, us sitting and listening to presentations. This should be the commissioners working together to figure out what the priorities are. So, I would table any presentations until we can figure out where we want to put our focus, and then we can bring in the presentations.
Okay. Okay, and I'm agreeable with that, Commissioner? Okay, great. Okay, great, May 13. So I appreciate it. I figure if we have everybody here together at one time, it's a good chance to talk about calendars. So that concludes that item.
Director's report.
The other item I have, a couple of items, update on the Board of the County Commissioners Committee, the whole meeting was held on February 24, 2022. There also is the Board of County Commissioners' public hearing on our utility CL solar facilities and our proposed amendments for our comp plan and our subdivision regulations. That hearing date is set for April 4, 2022, and that's at 2:00 p.m. That is a Monday, so just keep that in mind, it's a Monday afternoon at 2:00, and that will be at the Embassy Suites in Olathe on that, on that day. The other item that I skipped over is also in your packet, are the applications reviewed by the Board of County Commissioners dated for the month of February and March? That is in your packet. If you do have questions about that, please, please let me know. And then the last item I wanted to mention, and I discussed it just very briefly at our previous meeting, I think, since we have the technology available to us, I think we'd like to have these meetings, all of our Planning Commission meetings in the future, will be televised, as well as if we're in this, in this room, it's fairly easy to do. We tried to do it for this meeting, but there's some technical details we had to work out with, with the broadcasting meeting medium for our internal system, as well as the YouTube channel. So, but I'd like to propose that we have these meetings in a hybrid format that are televised, and I think that would be, you know, certainly more accessible to the public to attend those, and there's, I believe they're closed captioned as well. So beginning in April, we'll start that, that process.
Just a comment, Chris Iliff, Chairman. I think it's great to have the hybrid, and I think it's especially important, because it does allow people, members of the public, to hear what's going on without necessarily being present. I would like to encourage all of the fellow board members to be here present in person as much as possible. I think the discussion is more vigorous, and I think that the end result is probably going to be more acceptable if we, if we try to do that. But we recognize that the circumstances are such as they are, that people will have to travel, but it would allow people who are even on vacation or traveling on business to participate.
Randy Hutchins, would, would we be able to extend this opportunity for the hybrid meetings to the zoning boards as well? Jay?
Thank you, Mr. Hutchins. That's exactly what I was going to mention. We're going to try to do that. I was going to talk to them about that for the next month at their subsequent meetings. There's some issues in terms of where they're meeting, but I'd like to talk to them about that, to get some feedback from there.
I think that would be awesome, especially a lot of us engaged in agricultural activities. It's tough trying to be in person, but we can certainly do it remotely.
Yeah. Yeah. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
All right. Is there any other business? If not, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Mike Levin, motion to adjourn.
Mr. Levin's moved, second.
George London, second.
All in favor indicates saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.